All right. Good evening, everyone. As everyone starts to file in here, I want to welcome you to our Oakland School Board District One Candidate Forum. Sponsored over here, put on by FIA, Yumeng, Aspire Berkeley Maynard Academy, and North Oakland Community Charter School. So as you come in, you can drop off in the chat box, let us know who you are, where you're coming from, and, you know, what you're excited to learn about during our forum today. We have three candidates here that are going to give you a good lot of background on what they believe, the values they support, and where they, where they want to take the Oakland School Board over the course of the next four years. As you notice on the screen here, we have a Spanish translation, number listed 425, 436, 6363, and the code, access code is 101020. I want to thank, I think it's Priscilla Zamora that's doing the translating. And just one thing to remind the candidates that we do have a translator, so please be mindful of that as we give answers. There we go, Tammy, good to see you, Tammy from Berkeley Maynard, checking in, appreciate it. Carlos Rodriguez Senior at Lighthouse. Jamila Bowling, a parent from Kit Bridge Academy, welcome, thank you for all hopping in. Dee and Kevin from BMA also joining us. It's good to see, getting started off here. We're going to do a couple of intros prior to getting started, and just talk a little bit about what we have going on here. There'll be parents, students, leaders from each of these schools represented that are going to speak a little bit, and also do some of the question asking. The format's going to be, we're going to have some yes/no questions to start with, and then we'll roll into some other longer answers and let the candidates speak for what they have in store for us. So as everybody keeps to, keeps rolling in, we will get prepared to get rolling. As you start to join, if you do need the translation, please notice the phone number that's on the slide here, 425-436-6363, and the access code 101020. For those that have joined, any other reasons why you're here, what brought you here? I mean, I don't care about education, anything in particular that you're looking forward to hearing about? All right, Academy's joining on. Also know my wife's out there somewhere and listening from the other room, so hi Julia, how you doing? Yeah, as I mentioned to the candidates when I first popped on here, we just got out of a parent-teacher conference, so that was my, well, our second one over Zoom, so very fitting for what we have going on here. It's great, Knox community checking in, here to hear from the candidates. Just another couple, another 30 seconds or so, and we'll get rolling with the intro and let the, and get to the candidates, let them start, start letting us know where they stand on the issues. Please, as you come in, let us know who you are, where you're from, why you're here, and please use that chat function throughout the, throughout the form that we have here. Let us know what you're thinking. Time's just hitting 6:05 here, so I'm going to get started, and we'll roll from there. So, good evening, everyone, thank you for coming to the Oakland Unified School District Candidate Forum for District One. We're so excited to have you all here today, and are so grateful to these candidates for making the time to be here today. My name's Reggie Lee, I'm Chair of the Board at Yumeng, and also a member of, I live in District Four, so I'm not, not here for sure as far as voting, but definitely here because I have a deep care for children and learning. I'm the father of two, third grader and a first grader. What really brought me to where I'm at today is my son, during kindergarten, we discovered he was one of our, one of our special learners, and it was a scary time to raise a young black man, and to know that he has some, some disabilities that we needed to be aware of and be an advocate for. And through that process of learning has brought me to be more of an advocate and to work with the community at large when it comes to that. In total, Oakland Unified School District is home to 16,866 charter public school students. Thirty-two percent of the district's total student population in District One, over 25% of families have chosen charter schools. Our District One charter schools have a long, rich history in our communities. Our schools have been in D1 for 10 to 20 years as contributing members of the community. We want to be very clear that our schools are parent and community-powered and nonprofit organizations. Both Knox and Yumeng were started through the organizing efforts of Oakland families who came together to create unique school options that serve the needs of the local community. Yumeng is a National Blue Ribbon Mandarin Immersion School. Knox continues to be a parent-powered, community-school with robust literacy instruction and vibrant arts integration. Aspire BMA was founded when OUSD asked them to take over the facility, current student body, and attendance boundary 16 years ago. Today, BMA is an award-winning core high-growth school, and has one of the largest and highest-performing populations of African-American students in Oakland. Oakland Military Institute is a unique option in Oakland, providing exposure to community and country service, founded by our former mayor and governor Jerry Brown. Our schools attract diverse families from across Oakland. Let us be clear, we are locally-rooted, parent-powered schools. We are active members of the community, we are public schools, and not-for-profit. Tonight, we hope to learn about each of you and why you wish to represent our school communities in District One. D1 is home to four charter schools, serving 2,005 students. We have many of these charter students and families reviewing this event, as well as many allies from traditional public schools and community organizations who believe Oakland needs greater access to quality schools, especially for underserved communities. Thank you all for being here. We know when we get involved, raise our voices, and call on our elected officials to prioritize student equity and access, the entire public school system improves for all kids. Your voice matters, and your vote matters. First off, parents, please give yourselves a round of applause for being here and demonstrating your agency and power. Absolutely, all of you. I'd like to acknowledge Aspire Berkeley Maynard Academy, Yumeng Charter School, and North Oakland Community Charter for co-hosting this forum in collaboration with Families in Action for Quality Education, a coalition of charter schools across Oakland. First, I would like to introduce Yurulam, FI Parent Leader, will tell us more about herself and a little bit about FIA.
Hello, hi, my name is Yurulam Andesion, I am a parent in first and second grade at Yumeng Charter School, and eighth grade downtown charter school, and I am voting on this coming election, and encourage you to do the same thing, voting is a privilege and it's very important to vote. If I don't vote for my own interests, you'll do it. So each of us is here fighting for better education and better future for students. By supporting all kinds of high-quality public school charter and tradition, we help to make that possible. Since March 2019, Families in Action for Quality Education has been engaged in educating and building leadership capacity among stakeholders, including family, youth teachers, school leaders, and board members. Now our priority is to build collective power by bringing all these groups to build a strong movement, this time to break out of isolation and build power through unity. We want to ensure family and youth voices' priority to build collective power to bring all these groups to build a strong movement. It's time to break out of isolation and build power through unity. We want to ensure family and youth voices are heard and prioritized in Oakland Music High School District. Of course, board makes many, school board makes many decisions that impact charter school life, whether they are open, closed, and whether or not they access the facility. Today, you will have the chance to hear direct from the people who want to represent us and our students.
All right, before we roll into the next portion, just a little bit about FIA. March 2019, Families in Action for Quality Education has been engaging, educating, and building leadership capacity among stakeholders, including families, youth, teachers, school leaders, and board members. Now, our priority is to build collective power by bringing all these groups to build a strong movement. It's time to break out of isolation and build power through unity. We want to ensure family and youth voices are heard and prioritized. OUSD School Board makes many decisions that impact charter schools, like whether they are opened, closed, and whether or not they get access to a facility. Today, you'll have the chance to hear directly from the people who want to represent us and our schools and board District One. I want to thank Yurulam for, for her addition there. Many of our parents have gone through Oakland District Schools and are looking for high-quality school options. Next, I want to introduce Mario Rodriguez Ramirez, an amazing parent and leader who's going to lead us through our voting power pledge.
Mi nombre es Mario Rodriguez, y soy un padre con dos hijos en Lighthouse, una niña en séptimo grado y un niño en cuarto grado, y un padre líder con la organización FIA. Hoy les invito a que se unan a tomar el compromiso del poder del voto. Estas elecciones son muy importantes para la educación de todos nuestros estudiantes y que para, para que podamos hacer valer todos nuestros derechos sin importar raza, religión, o cualquier otro aspecto, porque pienso que nuestros hijos y todos los estudiantes merecen la misma educación y merecen tener mejores oportunidades y llegar al éxito como es llegar al college y a una mejor carrera profesional. Y por eso les pido que se comprometan a votar y correr la voz sobre estas elecciones, tomando el compromiso del poder del voto, y los que no puedan votar nos ayuden a promover estas elecciones, e invitar a la gente que sí puede votar, para que sí de esa manera salgan de la oscuridad y hagan valer sus derechos compartiéndolo con todos nosotros. Gracias, y voten, por favor.
All right, I'm going to read, hello, my name is Mario Rodriguez, and I'm a parent with two children in Lighthouse, one girl in the seventh grade and a boy in the fourth grade, and also a parent leader with the organization FIA. Today, I'm inviting you to take the voting pledge. These elections are very important for the education of all of our students, and to make count all of our rights, regardless of race, religion, or any other aspect. I think that our children and all of the students deserve the same education, and to have better opportunities and to reach success like college and a better professional career. This is why I'm asking you to commit to vote and spread the word about these elections, taking the voting pledge promise. And for those of you that are not able to vote, help us promote elections and invite those that can vote, so they can come out of the shadows and make their rights count, sharing them with us. Thank you, and please vote. Wanted to thank Mario, so many of our leaders like Mario see why we must pledge to increase our voting power through getting registered, voting, and if we can't vote ourselves, talking to those who can. Next, I'd like to introduce Temple Briers, an amazing parent from Knox. Temple will introduce each of the candidates who are running to represent our district on the school board. Right.
Hello, my name is Temple Briers, and I am a parent at North Oakland Community Charter School. Tonight, I will be introducing our candidates for District One. Austin Danhouse. Mr. Danhouse was a third-grade teacher who later taught in the San Quentin Prison Education Project. He runs a business that helps education organizations and socially-minded nonprofits with their strategy and communication. Sam Davis. Mr. Davis is an OUSD parent who was an educator in Oakland. He currently works at UC Berkeley on a data project to prepare high schools to improve their college eligibility. Mr. Davis is a member of the Oakland Tech PTA. Stacy Thomas. Ms. Thomas owns a bookkeeping business. Before moving to Oakland, she was a volunteer with the McCullum Youth Court and a mentor. Ms. Thomas is active in advocacy and organizations in Oakland.
All right, for those that are out there, let's have a round of applause for all of our candidates. In their answers to our questions, we'll learn more about what these candidates will do to help bring more opportunities for all of Oakland's public school students. Our format will start with yes/no questions with short responses, and include open-ended questions. Please note that we'll be strict on timekeeping to ensure every candidate gets equal time. On that note, we'll be helped by our timekeeper, Andra, another parent from Yumeng also. Andra will give you a 30-second warning and show you when time is up. Once the time is up, one of us will interject, then we'll mute your microphones. Okay, is everybody ready to get started? I'm going to have you line up, and then as the questions go, I will change the order, so each of you will get chances to go first and go through the process there. All right, first up to introduce the lightning round questions, please, these will be yes or no, will be Rochelle Williams.
My name is Rochelle Williams, and I'm a parent at Berkeley Maynard Academy. I'm here because parents like myself can be community leaders and advocate for the children in our schools. Tonight, I will be asking six yes/no questions for candidates for our lightning round. Candidates, please answer yes or no only. You are elected, will you commit to visiting all the schools in District One, including charter schools each year?
First up, Austin, yes or no?
Yes.
Uh, Sam?
Yes.
And Stacy?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Next question?
My name is Rochelle Williams.
All right, we'll get there, we're coming, here we go.
If you are elected, will you commit to listening to and meeting with parents and youth of all of the schools in District One, including charter schools?
First up, Sam?
Of course, yeah.
Stacy?
Yes.
And Austin?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, next question?
We chose charter schools because they are showing success. Will you support them to stay open?
First up, Stacy?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Sam?
I'll support successful ones, yes.
Next question?
If elected, will you support expanding high-quality and high-demand charter schools?
Austin?
Yes, if it fits with the district enrollment plans.
Yes or no, yes or no, yes or no? Sam?
No, I don't think we can expand charter schools at this time.
Stacy?
I, I don't think we can expand charter schools at this time. No.
Next question?
Do you believe charter schools as required under the Prop 39 law should have access to public different facilities?
Sam?
Yes, it's the law, we have to follow the law.
Stacy?
No.
Austin?
Yes.
And the final question for the lightning round?
If elected, will you ensure that charter schools get equal funding, including district bonds, parcel tax, and other revenue?
Stacy?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
And Sam?
No.
All right, thank you Rochelle, candidates, thank you for your yes/no responses. For all of the remaining questions, you will have two minutes to respond. And please remember, when we start off with Andra, we'll let you know at the 30-second point, and we will then let you know once the time is up. Audience members, if something resonates with you, please put your comments in. Next, I would like to introduce Gloria Ing, a parent from Yumeng, to ask our first question. And Austin, you'll be up first.
Hi, I'm Gloria Ing. North Oakland has been my home on olone land for nearly 15 years. I'm a single mom of three children who are part Nigerian and are recipients of free and reduced lunches. With extended family on my side understanding Cantonese, Hakka, and Mandarin, enrolling my children in a high-performing Mandarin immersion program at Yumeng was ideal to at least connect them with half of their heritage. My children's multiple names comprise of Chinese, Japanese, Yoruba, Muslim, and Buddhist roots. My family is not an exception. District One is home to diverse, high-performing school models that would otherwise not be available to Oakland families. As a board member, what will you do to make sure that families get access to a variety of different program options that meet their needs?
All right, Austin, you're up first.
Yeah, thank you so much for the question. First of all, I think that ensuring that we have all the programs that we need to meet the diverse needs of students and families starts with ensuring that every school site is well-resourced and well-funded. We know that there are too many schools in our district who, because of low enrollment or financial challenges at the central office, aren't consistently getting the resources that they need to build the programs that their students need, that their families want, that their communities have said are really important to them. So I share a commitment to making sure that we are addressing spending issues and budgeting issues at the district for the purpose of fully resourcing our school sites and making sure that every school with the input of parents and teachers and students in the community is offering the types of programs that we know are being responsive to the diverse needs of Oakland, right? Oakland's the most diverse city in the, in the state of California, and we should have schools and programs that reflect that. The other thing I'll do is through board policy, two things, one, continue to ensure that school sites can do everything that they can to spend the money in the way that fits with the needs of their students and families. I think that there's a lot that we can do to make sure that schools feel empowered, offer the types of programs that they think will best meet academic and social-emotional development needs of their students. And so I want to make sure, too, that we're equipping our school site leader and any of your parents that are working with the schools, with the tools and the understanding and the knowledge on how to be partners, on how to be partners in that budgeting process and in that spending process. I think that, making sure again, that that voice is informing what type of programs we have in our schools is going to be absolutely critical, and so as a board member, I'll ensure that we have both the funding and the policy that empower families and school leaders to do that.
Great, thank you, Austin. Sam, you're up next.
Thank you, and thanks to everybody who put together this forum, you know, I know it takes a lot of work, and I appreciate everyone who's calling in, there's so much going on for everybody right now with distance learning, and to tune in and listen to this shows real commitment to our schools and our kids. I just want to say, I think there are a lot of options in Oakland right now, there's so many schools, and many people are able to navigate all of those choices and find the best choice for their family, and, you know, I know that I might be perceived as like a anti-charter candidate or something, and I just want to be really clear that I would never criticize any family for making the best choice that they can find for their student. That's, of course, you know, what, as parents, what we always do. The criticisms that I have or the issues that I've raised are more just about making sure that we get a lot of concentration of privilege in some schools, and that includes district schools. We see some schools with enormous concentration of privilege, and other schools with enormous concentrations of need. And one of the issues that I've raised is, is, you know, students with special needs or disparities between the charter sector and the district sector, it's not to single anyone out or make anyone feel bad, but it's just a systems issue that there's a lot of incentive for charter schools not to serve students with special needs at the same rate that the district does. And so that's a way that, that certain families, if their student has special needs, they don't have all the options, especially, especially if their, you know, student has really severe needs like autism or emotional disturbance, or if there's a newcomer family, a family that's brand-new to this country, they don't know yet how to navigate all these different program options that we have in Oakland, and so they have to go do a newcomer program, and again, those are programs that the district has taken most responsibility for. So we just need to make sure we have a fair, a fair system, and not one that concentrates, you know, different populations in different schools. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Stacy, you're up.
Thanks, everyone, for holding this forum. In order to, to meet the variety of needs from such a wide variety of people that are attending our schools, I would hope that we could put together a packet in as many different foreign languages as possible that at least introduces every new kid to the district, and just the basics and what the school options are for that child, because we have so many different languages that are being spoken in Oakland. It would be great if every school in the district offered the basics, at least what were the basics when I was in school, which is art, music, gym, you know, depending on what age, things like technical expertise, whether it's working with metals or auto shop, those kinds of things. After-school programs should be available so kids have something to do after school. Racial equity and funding, I think, is going to be really important, because we all know that some schools have more than others, and also, we have to stop closing our schools because it tells some of our kids they're not important, and we can't, we can't do that anymore. I'd like to introduce social workers instead of, now that we have voted the police out of the OUSD, maybe we can have a social worker in every school, really help kids that might need to talk to a social worker. Also, let's ask parents what they think they need in their schools. I would love to do a questionnaire to the parents, at least in District One, to find out what they think is working and what they think is not, and any suggestions they have to make their school better.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Gloria, for that question, thank you, candidates, for your answers. For question two, I have the pleasure of introducing Monica Franco, BMA, and she will present that to us.
Hi, my name is Monica Franco, I am the Business Manager of Berkeley Maynard Academy. I have been working with Aspire Public Schools for 15 years. I was hired on March 18th, 2005. I worked very closely together with our founding principal, Kristen Klein. Our goal was to get to know our community, identify community leaders that would help us introduce ourselves to the community, to share our vision, as well as to gain the community's trust, sharing that our main objective was to have their children's best interest in mind. We had the community choose the name of our school. We had a big family meeting where we had over 100 parents, and we had them choose what name they wanted to give our school. They chose Robert Maynard and Thomas Berkeley, they were two very important members of the community in North Oakland. We decided to combine since they were very important to our community, and they were very big role models to our kids. We wanted to combine and honor both of them, so that's how we became Berkeley Maynard Academy. I have a question that I would like to ask. In the state of California, Prop 39 provides funding for all public school students, including charter schools. funding for all public school students, including charter schools, so that they can have fair access to public district facilities. Our parents work, pay taxes, parcel taxes, and we are entitled to equal access under the law. However, in Oakland, charter schools do not have the same access. The Oakland Unified District is one of the largest districts and the largest steward of public property in the state of Oakland. It is estimated that there are about fifteen thousand empty seats in the building. I'm not in the building, but in the district, I'm sorry. In one charter school, they are forced to pay two thousand dollars per student to private facility costs, taking away the value of education because they have to use the funds for the facilities. Do you believe our students deserve access to quality public school facilities? What step will you take to follow the law and to ensure all public school students have access to quality facilities? Thank you.
All right, Sam, you're up first.
Thank you, and I don't know how controversial that is. I mean, I think that the district just settled the lawsuit regarding Prop thirty-nine. So I think, you know, hopefully in the future, there can be a better resolution of those issues. I do know that there are many charter schools in public properties. So, and the district just signed a long-term lease with Aspire Berkeley Maynard for forty years. So, and there's been also, I think, favorable leases at other district sites. So I just wanted to also say I really respect all the people who have been working so hard in the charter schools. I don't mean any disrespect to the folks who have invested their lives. You know, I was part of Oakland community organizations. I've known a lot of people who worked in the charter schools over the years. My criticisms are not directed at people, they're directed at the systems that I feel like are really creating chaos in our district because there are just so many different schools, so many different CMOs, and it creates a level of confusion. I was talking out, talking to voters, and this one family, they were asking me about how did we get our Chromebooks? And their kids went to Emory School, Oakland Tech, Knox, and OMI. You know, that's four different educational systems.
Thirty seconds.
It's so hard for people to navigate all of these systems. So I think that in the long run, we have to figure out how to communicate better and how to create more fairness. On the Prop thirty-nine issue, I've actually heard a lot of complaints from district folks that the utilization formula on the district side gives district schools less space in those decisions than it does to charter schools. So I've heard it both sides, and I think we need to really look at it carefully and make sure we're following the law.
Thank you. Stacy, you're up.
Well, I do believe all of the kids in the district should have access to a quality space, and a quality space meaning a space that provides a library and a place for music and a place for art and a place for physical education. Now, I'm not clear on exactly which schools have and don't have those things. I also understand that there is the the understanding that Oakland Unified School has underutilized space, but there are also a number of schools within the public school system that don't have many of those things that I mentioned. So I'm not sure that I would call it underutilized as opposed to not utilized as well as it should be to meet the needs of the kids in those schools. This is a tough question to answer because I do think every kid should have a great place to go to school. I am disinclined to give up any more space in the public school system, but I would want to try to manage the school space that charter schools have to the greatest extent possible. But I need to better understand what charter schools feel like they don't have facilities that they need. Thirty seconds. And I don't want to close any more public schools because there's this assumption that there is excess space without first becoming, being on the board and really understanding who has access to what and how do we best navigate? Because we have a lot of kids that are disenfranchised and families that are disenfranchised that really need to get more resources first, and that would be my priority. Thanks.
Thank you, Stacy. Austin, you're up.
Yeah, thanks so much for the question. You know, one of the things that inspired me to get into this race was frustration with the amount of division between district and charter schools. I think that it has taken up a disproportionate amount of time in our conversation. Yes, there are some issues that we have to work out as a district, but the challenges that we face are bigger than just that division. And the challenges that we face are going to require all of us to work together to get every school in OUSD moving in the right direction. I think that so much of what happens in these facilities conversations is that we are not viewing schools approved to operate in this district as equal partners. And so I would first want to make sure that we are ending the division and say if a school is approved to operate in this district, it deserves the full faith and credit and support of the district to ensure that it is successful in serving the students that have chosen to go to that school, district, or charter. The second thing, I think, is we need to really have a good facilities plan. I think a big challenge here sometimes is not making sure that we're using our space as efficiently as possible. We need to know where there's capacity. We need to know where we can have schools. We need to make sure that we can do everything we can to ensure we know what facilities are available, and we're apportioning those facilities in a fair way that doesn't preference any type of school over another. The other thing is making sure that all funds for facilities maintenance are being shared equally as well. You know, I hear that both, again, in district-managed schools and in charter-managed schools,
Thirty seconds.
there are, you know, issues with making sure they have the funds available to continue maintenance and upkeep. I'm hopeful that Measure Y will pass to start to address a lot of the facilities issues that we're experiencing district-wide, but also want to make sure that those funds are fairly apportioned, again, to any school that's operating in OUSD because we have to treat us all as one, part of one big team that's working in the interest of students here in Oakland.
Thank you. Thank you, Monica. Thank you, candidates. Thank you for your responses related there to facilities and access. Next, I'm excited to introduce Mirela Stankiewicz, a parent leader at Knox, for our next question.
Hello, my name is Mirela. I am Julia Stankiewicz's mom. She's in second grade at Knox, and I am one happy parent. Knox is the vibrant environment, the small community school that our daughter really has been thriving in. She has a diverse pool of colleagues and friends. The school has really walked that path of helping her become a thoughtful, informed, inquisitive citizen. The founders twenty years ago really laid out a foundation's right because Knox really grows young leaders. It's quite an amazing little place to be. We are involved parents, and we care deeply about public education. And I have a few questions for you. One of them is regarding the criteria that you would use to defend the schools as they open in this financially strained environment. Another one is what lessons could you learn from the merger of Kaiser? And if you were on the board, what would you do differently? Thank you. I'll take the answers offline. Have a good one.
All right. We're back up. Two minutes?
Can you confirm the order? I think we're in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think you're up, Sam. I mean, Austin, sorry.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, so a couple things. One, you know, I think that in terms of criteria for determining, I'm letting the question scroll, just to make sure I get the wording right. Stay open, our financial strength, yes. Look, I think that it's really clear that, like, schools that are demonstrating that they can consistently partner with students and families to achieve academic and social emotional growth should always have a place in Oakland Unified School District. I think that student outcomes always have to be our number-one criteria when looking at schools, when making decisions about prioritizing resources. And so student outcomes, how are we meeting their needs, will always be the number-one criteria that I take a look at. I also think that accountability for results and transparency are critical for all schools that are operating in our district. And so schools that are working together well, that are accountable for results, that are transparent, that are working well with the district, that are including families in the community in their decision-making, again, will always have a welcome place. I think that we do need to look seriously at the enrollment concerns that we have across the district. I was just revisiting a public report that was presented to the board, which showed that in order to meet our vision for having fully-resourced community schools in every neighborhood, we're going to have to significantly raise enrollment in a lot of schools. And so we have to take every measure we can to ensure that we're not straining our resources across too many schools right now. As it relates to Kaiser and Sancopa, let's be honest. Closing a school is never something we should want to do or have to do, but in the midst of these financial challenges, there may be hard decisions that we have to make. I think that we need an open, transparent, community-involved process that is well-communicated from start to finish. I think that we have to do so much more to ensure that as that new school is created or the results of those plans are developed, that they include community voice, that they're not just decisions that are mandated on high. And so I would do more to make sure that we're building buy-in and support for changes to our district footprint, both here in District One and across OUSD.
Great, thanks, Austin. And Stacy, I actually believe you were supposed to go first that next round. I'll have you go first on the next question, all right?
Okay.
Okay.
Regarding the criteria to keep schools open, I want to keep all of our schools open because closing a school is devastating to a community regardless of the school. And closing a school sends a message to the kids and the parents that attended that school that they're not important enough to keep that school and that community space open. So I would, and I've looked at the numbers. I have a lot of accounting experience. I've looked at the numbers, and I've read a lot about this. And closing schools doesn't really save a whole lot of money, and in some cases, it can cost money because kids leave the district. So what I would rather do is approach it from a perspective of how do we keep our schools open, all of our schools, and make them better. What resources do they need? How can we use the money that we have? It's a six-hundred-million-dollar budget. I think we can figure out a way to really give resources to the schools that are having difficulty to make those schools better rather than talking about closing their schools. That's really where I want to come from, is whether it's a public school, whether it's a charter school, unless that school has been found to just be egregiously not serving the needs of the parents and the teachers and the kids. I mean, Roots Academy closed, and Kaiser Academy, or Kaiser closed, and nobody wanted those schools to close. They weren't clamoring at the school board meeting saying, "Yeah, we think this school is terrible." They were very emotional about those schools being closed. And regarding Kaiser-Sancopa, that's such a tough one. It sounds like Sancopa has actually benefited from some of the teachers that were at Kaiser, but now we have an empty school at Kaiser.
All right, thank you. Sam?
Thanks. I'll start with the second one. So, you know, there was actually some parents, both at Sancopa and some parents at Peralta, that wanted to see those two schools merge. And I think that would have been a more successful process because there was some community support for that. And there also were a number of parents in my neighborhood in Santa Fe that really wanted a school at the Santa Fe campus and were hoping that Kaiser would move down there. So that was an option that was on the table that didn't happen. I think it would have gone a lot better. I think that what we saw in that process was that the decision was made in a top-down way and wasn't really listening to families and teachers and what they were suggesting. And I think that that's got to be a part of these discussions going forward. If we don't have, I just feel like talking to teachers, they have not bought into the idea that closing these schools will bring them more resources, and they are very starved for resources. And so until they feel like the process is going to benefit them, if they can, you know, if we can involve the teachers and the families and find schools where it makes sense to merge because of the feeling, you know, that we can get more resources that way, I think that would be a successful merger. But otherwise, you're going to see what happened at Kaiser, which is families left the district, they went to either Berkeley or private school, or, you know.
Thirty seconds.
I saw this with Oakland Soul, where I was teaching after-school. A lot of students left the district to go to charter schools when the school closed. And so this creates a downward spiral in enrollment for the district. So I think that we need to look at the actual data and make sure that we're not sabotaging our own district by closing schools.
All right, thank you. So for our final question, it's actually going to be me to ask it. And I'm very happy that this one came to me because it's personally something that's very, that's very important to me. As I mentioned at the start, you know, being the father of two young black children, the idea of literacy is constantly on my mind. I'm fortunate that even with my son, being one of our sped students, he's, you know, exceeding all expectations in Chinese and English. And neither me or my wife speak Chinese. But what I've really come to realize is, you know, literacy, especially here in Oakland, when only one out of four black kids are on grade level, is probably the biggest problem that we have. And I think we've all seen the studies that if it's not handled by the time kids are in third grade, it really sets them on a path for a downhill in life. What does the board need to do immediately to dramatically accelerate reading progress made citywide by black children? What responsibility would you take as a board member to ensure this changes on your watch? Stacy, you'll go ahead and start us off.
Well, I think we have to be clear on what at reading level is and how we're assessing it because standardized testing has been shown over and over again to disproportionately adversely affect poorer kids and kids of color. So I want to be careful about that. And what I would like to do is get kids really excited about reading. I'm not a big proponent of standardized tests, but I am a big proponent of kids wanting to read and being excited to read and having books that they feel like represent them. Like, if I could do one thing, it would be creating a partnership with Marcus Books in North Oakland, which in fact is in our district, and seeing if we couldn't find a way to make as many books from that store as possible available to kids and read to them until we figure out what makes them excited. As far as responsibility is concerned, I'm sorry, what was the rest of the question? I'm reading it.
What responsibility would you take as a board member to ensure this changes on your watch?
I mean, I think it's critical that our kids can read. I think it's critical that they want to read. I think it's critical that they they have things to read that they want to read that encourages them to read more. So I really want to put reading material in front of kids that helps them want to be a part of reading books for the rest of their lives. Testing, okay, but I don't think that's, that's not first and foremost for me.
All right, thank you. We'll actually go with Sam next.
Thank you. Yeah, I think in my time working in the schools, I worked on the Manzanita campus for many years. And what I saw was the most successful at changing results for families was having reading intervention. So having a staff person whose job it was to work with any kids who were behind in reading, take them out, do intervention, help them catch up. It's making sure we're diagnosing any special education needs as fast as possible, working with families. with families, and I think definitely working with families. As much family volunteerism as we can encourage in our schools, that's huge, because those parents become extra support. They can often notice things that the teacher isn't noticing about which students are not getting the support they need or, or are not able to focus. And also making sure that we're reaching out to families to let them know about issues as soon as possible. I think culturally relevant curriculum does definitely play a role. I think that that's important, too. But I think that, you know, community partners, after-school programs, all of these are, are issues that we need to, resources that we need to draw on to help our students succeed. I would say that, you know, I'm not a big fan of standardized testing, but I do think that at the, in the early grades, we need to have, to be assessing their students regularly to be able to figure out, you know, what, which students are falling behind and why? What are the issues that are, that are affecting them?
All right, thank you. Austin?
Yeah, thanks so much. I think that the district's literacy crisis, especially for students of colors, at the heart of the academic challenges that we're experiencing as a district, you know, if the students struggle to read, it is difficult for them to participate fully in class. We know that for students behind in third grade, it's really difficult for them to catch up and make the progress that they need. When I was a third grade teacher in a public school, I loved, loved teaching literacy, but it was a challenge. I had over a quarter of my students came to me more than two grade levels behind. It was working with those students that gave me a passion for literacy instruction. And so I also started a literacy nonprofit as a result of that work. I teach developmental literacy at San Quentin in the Prison University Project. So I care a lot about this, and there are a few things that we need to do. Number one, we need to ensure that we have a good curriculum in place using both structured and balanced literacy as needed. And we need to make sure that we're personalizing instruction to the needs of students. Some students will benefit from a particular approach more than others might. We need to make sure that our teachers are well-equipped to know what works for that student well. And this is where assessments come in. I've been accused of being the standardized testing candidate. I don't, I'm not hung up on standardized tests, but as a teacher, I was using a whole host of assessments, checks for understanding, formative assessments, teacher-based assessments, observational assessments, because I cared. And I had to know where my students were in order to give them what they needed to be successful. I think we also need to infuse literacy instruction everywhere in the curriculum. Literacy instruction is not just the responsibility of our reading teachers, it has implications for math and history and social studies, which should be an obligation that we joyfully share in in helping our kids get to read. And then finally, I'll invest in the right professional development and shared best practices for our teachers, so they are fully, fully equipped to be partners for literacy with all of our students and families.
Great, thank you. So we're doing pretty well on time, and I got a couple of follow-ups on that last question. You know, as I noted in the question, and that's, I believe one of you mentioned, the literacy issue in the city of Oakland, we're one in four on grade level, has, is, is a crisis. And I know amongst the community that if we don't fix this immediately, we're never going to get out of this spiral. And I, I would like to hear some, what is immediately, day one, what are you going to do to address this problem? We'll go ahead with the follow-ups. I believe Sam, you're up first.
Thank you. Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting myself. Yeah, I, I, once again, I, I think that, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic, right? And so that makes this crisis even worse and, and more challenging. And I'm so worried about what's happening to our kids right now, that they are not in classrooms, and it's so hard to reach, it's even harder to reach them, it's even harder to make progress right now. It's hard to get books out to families. I know that many people have been trying. So I think the biggest issue is, what I would want to do on day one is get as many books out to as many families as possible, because so many families don't have many books at home. I think getting more intervention into the Zooms, because so many of these Zooms have a very high ratio of students to teacher, and we need to break that down as much as possible, because it's only in small groups that you can really make progress on reading. So whether it's community partners, whether it's reading intervention, whether it's substitute teachers who are being brought in, we need to get parent volunteers, we need to get the whole community in there volunteering with our kids or supporting our kids to help them make progress on, on reading.
Okay, next up, Stacy, go ahead.
Well, it's my understanding that the teachers do at least an assessment for each of their students at the beginning of the school year. So that would be a, a great place to start. And once we identify the kids that look like they're going to need some additional help with reading, it would be great if we could get some student teachers to help, because teachers now are just, it's harder than ever, of course, given the, the remote learning, but it would be great if, once the teachers identify the kids that look like they're having some difficulty, get help for those teachers in the form of student teachers that can be a part of the team that works with these kids and reads with them more. And yes, it should be incorporated into all parts of the curriculum. And yes, get books into the hands of kids that may not have access to as many, so that those books can be read together with the student teachers. I think that's what we, that's about as much as we can do on day one.
Okay. Thank you. I have another question I'm going to add on here, because I'm the moderator, we have time, but one, I would.
Austin has not had a chance to answer that question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Austin.
Yeah, so two things I would want to do. Number one, and we've seen this work really well in actually a number of large districts across the country, and there, there's an approach you can take, which is to say, let's look at the schools where literacy is being successful, right? Where we have being student outcomes as it relates to literacy that we really want. And we can let, we can let those schools continue to do what it is they're doing. For schools that are maybe struggling, we can create a district-wide menu of curriculum options for them. And the reason that we should limit some of those options is not to eliminate choice, but it's so that we can guarantee that we can support those options with high-quality professional development and shared best practices amongst the district. And so I think that we need a system that is learning from what's working well and then providing plenty of support in the places where things aren't quite working as well as they should. The second thing that I would really want to focus on is personalized instruction. I echo Sam's sentiments about the importance of small groups when it comes to literacy. But here's the thing, we can do this if we train our teachers on personalized instruction. When I was teaching third grade, I would have a 90-minute literacy block, and only 20 of those minutes were spent providing direct instruction to all 26 kids in my class. The rest of that time was spent with students working in stations, on computers, silent reading, literacy projects, you name it. And each of those things were tailored to where they were at on a grade level reading at that time. And then what I would do is I would pull small groups one by one and work with those students who are at the same place to move them forward. We have the instructional and classroom management strategies to make a huge impact, and we should train our teachers on, on to implement those strategies so that they're being implemented in schools all across the district.
All right, thank you, Austin. Sorry about that. Now, I'm going to ask one other, and while I am asking that, audience members, if you have a question that you would like to have answered, please submit it, and we should be able to at least get one of them. The next question I have is going, as we've all noted, pandemic, distance learning, and all the problems that go along with that. I mean, we all know we're also in the shadow of a massive federal election coming up. So let's say on the other side of, of virtual learning and we're back in school, what are you as a board member going to do to ensure the, and improve the social, emotional issues that are going to inevitably come out of this? How are you going to deal with that? How are you going to help families deal with that, schools deal with that? Let's go ahead. Stacy, you're going to start with this one.
Can you say it one more time, please?
Coming out of coronavirus and everything that our kids have gone through over the course of the last six months, and which will probably continue for the near term, how are you going to support the social, emotional toll this is taking on kids, parents, families, teachers?
Once we return or just now?
Let's start off with, let's start off for now and then when we return.
Okay. Wow, this is so hard. I, I, because it's going to be different probably for almost every family, how this is impacting them. Again, I think it's going to require a, a lot of input from the families to understand, but can we, can we provide time for kids that maybe is on Zoom for just the kids to talk about what they're feeling, what they're missing, what they're struggling with? Should we maybe schedule time with the kids and social workers is one alternative? I want to hear from the parents, what they think is missing from their kids. It would be great if we could get small groups of people together, if there's a way to coordinate that through the O U S D with parents who are willing to have outdoor get-togethers in small groups where everyone is wearing masks, so there can be some, some level of socialization, because I know kids are so hungry for it and they must be so tired of sitting in front of computers. So any way that we could get small groups of people together and, and have some kind of a database through the O U S D with parents, teachers that would be willing to do those small get-togethers.
Thirty seconds.
As we come back into school, again, that's such a hard thing to answer. Clearly, it's going to depend on the county health board statistics or the state of California health statistics. It's going to depend on teachers' levels of comfort, parents' levels of comfort. How much space do we have? This is where that so-called underutilized space is probably going to work in our favor, where we can spread kids much further out, but I, I, I think it's going to be a really hard thing to go back to school.
Thank you, Stacy. Also, just again, if you do have any questions you want the candidates to answer, please put them in the box and we will get those out. Austin, you're up next.
Yeah, thanks for the question. One of the things that, that I just want to say is, you know, in a lot of these conversations, Sam in particular has done a great job of reminding us how important it is to center families and every decision that we make is for leaders. And Sam, I appreciate you so much elevating that throughout our, our debates, you know, I, you know, we've gone through this process together. I think that, to what Stacy said, we need to make sure that we are listening to what families need, because this pandemic is affecting families in very, very different ways. But what that does mean is that we need to stop making social, emotional learning a nice-to-have at schools and a need-to-have at schools. Again, when I was a teacher, we would start our day with 30 minutes of circle time, and people would tell me that I was crazy, that they would say that's so much time that you're not dedicated to instruction. But during that time, you're checking in with students on their emotional health, on their basic needs, how their day's going, how they're experiencing school. And that would give me the data that I needed as a teacher to know how I could best partner with that student and their family to ensure that they're showing up prepared to learn in the best way possible. The other thing is that build really, that forged bonds between students, so that they were partners to one another and lifting each other up and creating a really incredible school environment and classroom environment in our classroom. So what we need to do is make sure that we're asking families, what do we need? And not be afraid of innovative solutions. I was fortunate to work on the telehealth project when I was doing education policy in Texas. There were rural students who weren't getting the special education services mandated by their I E Ps because there weren't qualified teachers in the area. And we were able to use things like telehealth and the instructional support they needed. And those are things that we can use to also ensure that we're providing mental health services and social, emotional development. I've been fortunate to partner with a Bay Area-based organization called Mindful Schools. That should be a part of reopening, giving students the ability to control their minds, their emotions, and the ways that they're showing up in the classroom is not nice-to-have. It is essential to a well-rounded education, and I'd fight for that as a board member.
Time's up.
All right, Sam?
Thank you, and, and thanks, Austin, for the shout-out. Yeah, I think it is really important to have parent voice in these conversations, because, you know, families really know a lot about what their students need. I also saw in the chat Isaac shouting out Prop 15, and I think that's a really important issue to bring up. You know, all of our schools, charter and public, are really struggling right now because California underfunds education so hard. And, you know, we're 40th out of 50 states in per pupil spending. And so if we could pass Prop 15, we could have more money for more resources, we could ask the county to, you know, insist that the county give us some of those dollars for wraparound services at schools. So I think it's really important to advocate for more services from the county and from the city at our school site. We need those, you know, after-school programs, we need the rec centers. I think that also you see different teachers using, you know, my son is in ninth grade, they have an advisory, you know, some teachers use advisory really well to check in with students, to give that social, emotional time, to, you know, teach to the question of the pandemic, how are you handling it? How is our society handling it? How would you do it differently? And so I think we really need to let students, you know, if I was a student right now, I would be outraged at how the adults are handling this pandemic, how they're handling our country, and rightly so. And so that hopefully will help them to think about what they would do different and, and feel more agency instead of powerlessness.
Thirty seconds.
I've seen teachers do great work with advisory to give it, give students a chance to share emotionally, to have circle time. You know, it's not just at the elementary level. That's really important at the elementary level, it's also really important at the middle and high school level, to give students a safe space to check in and discuss the feelings that they're going through, the problems that they're having. I, I saw an awesome thing at Tech actually where they were using padlets for students to just post anonymous comments and anonymous issues that they were confronting.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Question here from the crowd, it's actually on the screen here that we're going to use. How will each of you address the growing antagonism between district and charter public schools? If we all believe, if we believe all children matter, this conflict is a problem that, I mean, if we believe all children matter, this conflict is a problem and doesn't move us forward?
Yeah, I'm happy. Yeah, I'm happy to take this one first. I think it's my time up. So a couple of things. One, you know, I think that, again, as I mentioned at the beginning of this, this is one of the things that motivated me to get into this race. I think that we have wasted too much time, too much effort fighting over something that is not at the core of student academic success, which is things like literacy instruction, which is things like student, social, emotional growth and development. And so I think that the way that we do that is we put students at the center of our decision-making. Now, that may sound really obvious, but there are a lot of parental politics that are causing us to give our attention in too many directions. We need to create a fair and equitable system for every school, district-managed or charter-managed, so that they have everything they need to be successful. I think that one of the things that that starts with is making sure that our, our assumptions, our beliefs, our policies are rooted in the facts. I have heard more name-calling in this election, especially as it relates to billionaire-backed privatization, which diminishes the community-led processes that have led to the majority of charter schools and not all of the charter schools in this district. And so it starts with being honest, with telling the truth, with being rooted in facts and data, and realizing that this has nothing to do with our political differences as parents, but this has everything to do with how do we create schools that meet the needs of the wonderful and diverse students and families all across Oakland who are depending on the adults in the room to put aside their differences for their sake? And that is one of the reasons I got into this race.
Thirty seconds.
Sure that the appropriate amount of time in these conversations and these debates was focused on what we know leads to student success and not focused on issues that are a distraction from keeping the main thing, the main thing. And so as a board member, I will always encourage my colleagues to make sure that we are making that decision rooted in fact at all times for every student.
Thank you. Sam, you're up next.
Thanks. And I think, you know, the growing antagon, I don't know, the growing antagonism, I think, is, is mostly an adult problem. I think it's, again, not about kids. I think if you talk to most families, you know, fam, there's many families that have one child in a district school, one child in a charter school, they're not at war with each other, you know? I, I, again, I don't criticize. I, again, I don't criticize any family for making a choice, the best choice for their kid. I don't criticize any teacher for investing their lives in, in making a school better, whether it's charter or public. What I do identify is a systems issue. And I also feel that actually the district has bent over backwards to help charter schools. They've signed 40-year leases with some charter management organizations. They've, you know, there's, there's actually a lot of favors that Oakland Unified has done for the charter sector. So I don't feel that, that the school board has been rapidly anti-charter. If anything, I think it's the opposite. And so I think it's just we need to figure out how to make the systems fairer, because we do see this disparity where students with special needs, there's only 8% of the students in charter schools have special needs compared to 14% that are served by the district. And that disparity because of funding issues is making it very, very hard for the district financially, as well as the newcomer population. And so it's just not a sustainable model to have this many charter schools in Oakland. But I don't think that means we need to close charter schools tomorrow. We need to figure out how to integrate charter schools back into Oakland Unified, allow them to keep whatever special sauce it has that makes them so wonderful, if they're a wonderful charter school, or figure out what support they need if they're struggling. And that would be the way to solve this problem in the long run, is to no longer have two systems that are so difficult for people to navigate between and identify how to get from one to the other.
All right, Stacy?
Well, it's, I concur with much of what Sam said. I, I think it's, I mean, it's curious that this, or it's notable that this very forum is only charter schools. So, so by its very nature, it's been, it's been independent of other schools that are not charter schools. How could we get past that divide? I mean, I don't know. Are there intramural sports where kids are playing after school that are in charter schools and not in charter schools? So they're meeting one another? I mean, that's, that's at their level. At our land, at our level, funding is, it's problematic. I mean, I guess my question is, if the OUSD schools are not meeting the needs of the parents, and clearly they aren't, because that's why charter schools are started. And I understand charter schools are started because parents got frustrated with what was not being offered. So OUSD in that case did not do a good job. But my question to charter schools is, if a school isn't working for you, why not try to help make that school be better rather than taking resources and starting your own? And that's really a legitimate question for me, because I'm not, I don't understand the answer to that question. And it doesn't answer your question, but it, it's something that I would like to better understand.
Okay, understand doesn't answer, I mean, you want to try to answer mine? And you want to give that one a try, the antagonism, how are you going to deal with that?
I, I thought that I did.
Okay, all right. Thank you, candidates. And that's going to be the last official question there. But we're at least going to, we're also going to give you a chance here in the closing statements. Think we can do these at two minutes each. And we will start off with, like, Stacy, you're up.
Okay. Our schools are the foundation of a democratic society. They're the most important thing we can provide to help level the economic inequities and related education gaps in our neighborhoods. In addition to teaching our kids how to read and do math, they're places for growth and inspiration. They help bring communities together, which is why we should stop the blueprint process of closing schools and find ways to provide support needed in our schools rather than closing them. My career spans 30 years of accounting and owning my own bookkeeping business for the last 12. I can use that experience to better understand the financial position of the district and share it with the community to help build better budgets. I participated in a restorative justice program called the McCullum Youth Court that was very effective in a model for ways to change how we work with our at-risk kids. I'm running in part because I was asked to by Members of Action 2020 and Oakland Not For Sale and other educational justice activists in Oakland to stand up for the people whose voices have not been heard. If elected, I would vote no on school closures. That's all schools. The cost savings is a false narrative. I'd fight back against FICMAT's attempts to control our district. Understand the OUSD org chart and demand that department heads are responsible for managing their portion of the budget. Build budgets that support equity and racial justice in our schools, including the addition of a racial justice department, and work with Black Teachers Project to see what we can do about hiring more teachers of color and supporting them once hired. I'd end the lease for office space at 1,000 Broadway, saving millions of dollars each year to request that OUSD be housed in our school.
Thirty seconds.
All of our schools. And I'd visit with each school and PTA in my district and in person or via Zoom. Thanks very much for putting on this forum.
Thank you, Stacy. Austin, you're up next.
Yeah, thanks again for hosting this forum. A couple of things, as I've said a couple of times, I feel like I've given my closing statement a few times, but I just want to reiterate a couple of points. I am running because I want student outcomes to be at the center of our decision-making. Not because they're the only stakeholder that matters, but because we as stakeholders who aren't students need to be unified for their sake. And, and more than anything, I want us to start to have debates and conversations from a place of mutual respect and listening, so that we can really do what's in the best interest of students. And I think that the board needs that kind of leadership. We have got deep divisions that we need to repair on the board, so that we earn the community's trust in terms of our decision-making and that we are doing a good job of listening to all parties, all stakeholders, all members of our community, to ensure that we are creating schools that are working well for every student and for every family. I, one of the things too that's motivating me to run is to have the experience of K-12 classroom teachers on the board. I think it is so important for people who know what it's like day in, day out, to partner with families, to partner with other teachers, to create an environment where students can learn and flourish. And I think as we're making decisions about important things like literacy, we need folks who've been in there, who know how those decisions are going to impact our teachers who are on the ground. We know that our teachers are the most important factor in a child's education. And we should do everything that we can to make sure that they have everything they need to be great, great partners for our students. And then the final thing is we need to do better.
Thirty seconds.
We need to do better as it comes to ending racial inequality in this district. As has been pointed out, one in four black students are reading on grade level. That is not, that's not just a crisis of literacy. That is a moral crisis that our community needs to reckon with. And we need board leaders who will make sure that our black and brown students are getting the same opportunities as their wealthier, whiter peers in other part of the district. So that's what I'm going to fight for as your school board member.
Great, thank you, and Sam?
Thank you, and thanks, Reggie, for moderating and for everybody who put together this panel tonight. I really appreciate the exchange of ideas. And that's, you know, what I'm all about, is listening to families, listening to teachers. I was, I'm a parent of a ninth grader at Oakland Tech. I worked in the district for 10 years. Many of those years on the Mancunida campus, where I taught a family literacy program, parent education, and then I was the family outreach coordinator for many years. And during that time, you know, we just prioritized increased family volunteerism, listening, you know, we had passionate teachers who were working so hard to help their students overcome all the barriers that they had experienced, whether because of racism or economic deprivation. And it was just a wonderful, wonderful place. And yet people were really demoralized by the dysfunction and the bureaucracy at the district level. And so that's why we would go with other parents to the school board meetings and fight for preserving our, you know, school site budgets when budget cuts were happening. And we would go and advocate for measures similar to Prop 15 to try and get more funding for our schools. And so that's how I got involved with Oakland community organizations. And I met a lot of wonderful community activists. And people were just passionate about supporting their kids' schools, many, many teachers. And I got to know a lot of charter families, families in both charter and district, charter teachers, administrators. So I, I know people on both sides of the.
Thirty seconds.
Divide, so to speak. And I respect everybody who pours their energy and heart into our schools. I do feel like we need to figure out how to have a system that's more fair and how to prevent concentration of privilege in certain schools. And that includes district schools just as much as certain charter schools. So I really want to advocate for true school integration in our system.
Definitely, thank you, Sam. Candidates, we want to sincerely thank you for being here this evening. Thank you for your service and dedication to the students and family of Oakland throughout your careers. We are grateful for your interest in representing our community of 2,005 families who have chosen charter schools in Oakland Unified's School District One. So, audience, thank you. Please give them a round of applause. Appreciate it. So now for the participants and everybody watching, we have a couple of things we want to get through. But first, based on what you know about the candidates so far, we want to hear from you. So if you see the scan code that's on the, on the screen there, just take a picture of it, or there's a link in the chat box. And if you had to vote this evening, who would you vote for? As you know, in Oakland, we have ranked choice voting. So please indicate in the survey what your first, second, and who your first, second, and third top candidates are. Next up, we have an Oakland youth leader who's here to share a call to action to stay engaged in voting, an important opportunity with you. Tonight, you decided to join the forum. We want to invite you to stay engaged and to continue to exercise your power and leadership. We have Lamaya Nguyen, a student at Aspire Berkeley Maynard Academy, and she's going to share a message. All right.
Everyone, my name is Lamaya Nguyen, and I'm an eighth-grade student at Berkeley Maynard Academy. I'm here because education is important to me and many other young scholars. I care for education a lot. It's something that's needed in life, something that every young person should have. It's very tiring that we're represented so negatively in this education community of Oakland. And I believe that every vote counts. It's why it's so important to get people in the office to represent our voices as kids and teens and not just adults. We are also young adults and deserve our voices to be heard. Something that I personally like to see at our school is seeing folks being more competitive with learning, et cetera. Thank you so much.
Great job, Lamaya. It's great to have young people determined to use their voice and contribute. As noted here on the screen, first off, I want to thank families, educators, youth, community members for coming out to the candidate forum. We showed a lot of power this evening with our presence. I want to extend a very special invitation to each of you to join us in the citywide elections kickoff and FIA summit on October 6. We'll be coming together from all districts across Oakland in even bigger numbers to show our power as charter school stakeholders and to stand up for access to quality public schools. We'll also be hosting a drive-through voting registration and celebration at BMA beginning at 7:00 PM following the event. Before we wrap up for the evening, please RSVP to the FIA founding summit and citywide elections kickoff on October 6. You can find the link in the chat box and on the screen there, another, another code to scan. And here we are, wanted to, first, audience, please give yourselves a round of applause. Thank you for attending, bailing yourself with the process here. You're inspirational when you're involved in learning more about candidates and the issues that impact you. You're able to have a huge influence on shaping positive change in your communities. So appreciate everyone coming out. Just a quick for our results here. First, as far as the voting went, first was Austin, second Sam, third Stacy. And thank you for being here. And most of all, thank you for demonstrating your leadership in District One. We look forward to seeing all D1 families at the FIA founding summit and drive-through voting celebration at BMA. And like you all said, as this goes, please center our kids and let's find a way to work together. Thank you. Thank you all three for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much.